Good morning. I think we'll go ahead and call the meeting to order. We'll go ahead at this time and do a rule call.
Holm.
Here.
Hawkins-Smith. Connolly. Altringer.
Here.
McCoy.
Here.
Garcia.
Here.
Severson. Delurie. Bowens. Johnson. Smith.
Here.
Judge Pashner.
I saw that Nikki Severson's online. She just joined.
Okay.
Joined, thanks guys.
Welcome Nikki. If we could do a, if I could entertain a motion to approve the minutes from April 8th meeting. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Any abstentions? Okay. The minutes are approved. At this time, we would entertain any public comments from the audience. Anybody that has any specific comments, now would be your time. Hearing none, we'll go ahead and move on to the action items.
Number three, fiscal year 2425, value-based incentive payments to the integrated services agencies.
I have Sarah here to speak on that if you guys would like to have her explain what this is.
Good morning Sarah.
Good morning Sarah Lupkus. Today's a heavy day, but also a great day. So, we are marking the end of an era for our incentive, our performance-based contracts, incentives, our outcomes. Item number three is for our integrated service agencies. They started thirty years ago and with the support of our board supervisors, had established system values and then said, "These are our values, these are the things we want to see out of services." That defines our outcomes. They've changed over the past thirty years. However, the same thing remains, that we have high satisfaction with our services and we have given people lives. We've given people great lives. Our staff work very hard in our integrated service agencies and the outcomes that they have been able to achieve and the amount of accountability they have shown our taxpayers is phenomenal and want to thank the board for your support on that. The recommendations are on, let's see what page that is. Is it on page four? Yes, the recommendations are on page four with that resolution. So, we would appreciate a motion to distribute the incentive dollars that are based on the independent evaluation that we contract with the University of Iowa Law, Health Policy and Disability Center on. They do file reviews, they conduct satisfaction reviews for the folks that are in services and then they look at the evaluation results from the actual outcome areas. So, the scores are based on, the incentive awards or value-based payments are based on the actual achievement of outcomes. Are there any questions?
Any questions for Sarah?
I also would say that Sarah has led this charge for a very long time, since I started in nineteen ninety-seven, ninety-eight when this started. And it's very, being values-based and this kind of information that you've been able to provide your providers is extremely valuable. And I know it's hard for you to see something that you built go away and it's hard for us as well. But know that it's been extremely important for, as providers, for us to, you've changed how the providers of Polk County think about how they provide services and so I hope you're really proud of that and we thank you for all of that work.
Thank you, very kind.
And I would like to add, for Mark and Jill, since you are new to all of this. So, with the change and the realignment at the state, they are getting rid of the integrated service agency program that we have had for over thirty years. So, they have stated that the individuals who have mental health diagnoses, that program will need to transition by December 31st or January 1st into a sort of community treatment programs for those that would qualify and for the others, they'd have to go into the traditional system. And for our people with intellectual disabilities and developmental disabilities, they will remain in the integrated service agencies until the new waivers are up and going. So, we believe that will be July 1st, but we're not positive because it's already been pushed back a year. So, we will keep that program going until those waivers are in place and then those individuals will transition to those waivers.
Annie, that was July 1 of twenty-five or July 1 of twenty-six?
Twenty, we're in twenty-five. So, twenty, it was supposed to be July 1, twenty-five, it did not happen.
It'd be July 1, twenty-six. That's what I thought it was gonna be, in July 1st. So, that's gonna be moved forward, okay?
Yep.
All right. If there are no other questions, we take a, entertain a motion to approve the value-based incentive payments. Rule call? Oh, excuse me, we'll do, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Any abstentions? Okay. Motion carries. Item four is a continuation of the same discussion?
It is, it is. So, when they talked about the ISAs, I talked a lot about the values, the system values and the partnerships and things like that. I'd like to continue that on with a little bit more of our expanded partners, where we developed relationships with local police forces. We expanded our crisis services as a direct result of these outcomes because we knew that folks were in jail, people were getting inappropriately hospitalized, people were sitting in broad lawns, broad lawns didn't want that, people didn't want that, we didn't want that. So, together we worked to get, to track on the number of days and to get people in the community and to have healthy days in the community. And the outcomes definitely have demonstrated that and developed some good programs with that to support people in the community. And, and yeah. So, the next one we're gonna talk about is service coordination. That is a smaller program, but we have three agencies that are supporting our folks and would recommend that, based on their evaluation scores, that incentive, value-based performance payments be distributed to them. And to clarify, this board makes the recommendation of the board of supervisors. So, at nine-thirty, then the board of supervisors will actually complete the vote on that, so. But, these incentive payments have made, they're small in comparison to our full budget, but yet they mean a lot to the staff and they are, they've really helped staff be able to achieve some just life, basic life things. Throughout the years, we've heard stories about staff being able to put propane in their propane tanks so that they have heating for the year. And, you know, these incentive dollars don't go for lavish vacations or anything like that. They're just, you know, continuing to support our staff who don't make a whole lot in life and make them connect the work that they do on a daily basis to, to the outcomes. So, appreciate a motion on that.
Thank you Sarah. So, we'll be looking for a motion to approve the incentive distributions to service coordination providers and under item four?
Correct.
Okay. All those in favor will say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? And those abstaining? Okay. All right. And the item five, Annie?
Yep, so we have a mosaic contract amendment. This is due to them for utilization. We had a couple individuals who went into twenty-four hour care and we didn't budget for it. We do have the money in other places in our budget and so that will just be moved over and be able to pay them for that service.
Okay. Any questions for Annie? Hearing none. Entertain a motion to approve the mosaic amendment? All those in favor will say aye? Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries.
Okay, so now just an update on the Aging and Disability Services Resource Center, our new contract, disability access points, whatever you want to call it. It has a lot of different names. The Aging and Disability Town Halls are taking place. I don't know if anyone has attended them, but they have covered things such as kind of an overview of the billing process. We're doing introductions to our agencies at the last one and at the one today. So, I'll be presenting on who we are. And so, they have been, I think, a little productive, so we'll continue to do those. They have provided a provider toolkit that I've sent out to all of the providers so that they have more information. They will be scheduling trainings with all of the providers on how to bill and what the billing process will look like in the future. They have scheduled trainings for our disability service navigators, so those will start taking place tomorrow through, I think they're continuous, but they're really intense from tomorrow until the end of June. We had to submit our draft transition plan, which we submitted on May 1st and feedback was received, so we're in the process of making some small corrections. There's, they were pretty well received, so it's not that big of a job and we'll be submitting that by Friday to them for final approval. And then, yesterday, we had our first ADRC meeting with the Triple As, the disability access points and the ADRC call center staff. So, that, we were able to get together, understand what each of us does, build some relationships. In our district, we have four Triple As that we will need to work with. So, that was kind of overwhelming when you have that many that we're gonna be working with. And then, currently, our staff are working on determining who all the clients are in the fourteen counties that we'll be taking on and determining if they will move to long-term services and support service coordination or if they will move into what we're calling funding navigation. So, if they have a care coordinator in IHH in our community-based case management through the MCOs or through fee-for-service targeted case management, then there won't be two workers like there currently is. There will just be one worker through those programs who will be in contact with a person in our office who will authorize all that funding to kind of eliminate people and it just gets too confusing when there's a lot of individuals in somebody's life. So, the less people, the easier it is to understand what's happening. So, that is what has been going on for the last month or so with Aging and Disability Services.
That's a lot. And what, one of the questions I had is how are clients being communicated to at this point, from the standpoint of the changes and understanding what's happening? What kinds of, what kinds of efforts are being made to touch those folks?
So, all of our service coordination agencies are working with their clients to explain the process and how it's gonna change. It's a little less, I don't know what the word is. The other regions that we're bringing in, we're not as far along as we are with our own here in Polk County because we can't get a clear list from those other regions on who they're actually working with. So, that has been difficult. And so, we've really focused at this point on our Polk County people because we know who they are. We want to make sure that they're in the right spot and that they get connected up with the right resources. So, for those, Stephanie has been meeting on a, I think, daily basis with all of our agencies and she started working with the other two regions that we're connected to, to try and figure out who they're working with. We have not communicated from our office yet with the individual clients. We've let that be on the service coordinators since they have the relationship with them. And then, HHS has town halls that are made just for individuals who receive services and their families. And I've attended all those town halls, so.
Are we still going to serve the same number of coordinators out there? Our agencies will be saying no?
No.
It will grow?
Well, it's gonna change, not really grow. Because Iowa Primary Care Association is taking on some of the individuals that we serve.
Okay.
So, we will be not contracting with broad lawns or with, oh my, mine is blank. Irelie Ball, thank you, to do service coordination. It will be with community support advocates. And broad lawns really serves the people who, primary healthcare is the main, who will be the main contractor. At the last meeting with the CEOs, Primary Healthcare, or Primary Care Association stated that they want to contract with our current coordination agencies if they would so be willing. So, I have given broad lawns, Dr. Kendra Perry, that information so that she can contact Iowa Primary Care Association and get that set up. And then, Irelie Ball has their CCBHC, which they'll be transitioning into. And so, we're working on those clients also.
Okay. And do we know how many lives will be taken care of in terms of, under this, under this disability contract? How many folks will be, be providing services for?
So, for Polk County, we have about four hundred individuals.
Okay.
We still don't know from the other two regions, but we believe there's gonna be about sixty from each region that will be coming to us.
Okay. Okay. Excellent. Any other questions for Annie about the transition and/or activities to date under the Disability Resource Center?
I would like to say thank you to Annie and her team. I've been in a lot of meetings with CEOs across the state and providers. The general consensus of the providers is that they have no idea what's going on except for providers in Polk County. And so, I know that it's a, like, it's really hard to watch because providers seem completely lost. And then, us in Polk County will say something, they're like, "How do you know that?" I'm like, "Well, Polk County's really good at communicating with their providers." And it's just not anywhere else. And so, you've got like, really just a sense of, and so, I think we are really, again, very blessed to have not only Polk County and Annie and her team get, be working with them and then have a contract to make a really difficult situation a little bit better. So, I want to thank you for that because it's just not great for providers right now because none, you know, none of us have our contracts on the mental health side. Nobody knows anything of what's going on. Like, to hear that they're gonna contract with crisis service coordination and it's almost the end of May, no one has staff, that's a twenty-four-seven service. I talked to them about that and they said they're still considering it and they would let me know at the end of June for a seven-one start as a service that we already provide. That is just ridiculous. Sorry, but that is so frustrating and I'm sure Steve feels the same way. I mean, we should have known that if they were gonna contract.
Well, I think that underscores the, transitions are always hard and, and it's the clients that we're serving, the people that we're serving that are, that are needing these services and depending upon us, depending on the communication. And when that doesn't happen, it's, it's, it's hard on the families, it's hard on the caretakers, it's hard on the service organizations, it's hard to staff. So, we appreciate everything you've done. And would you just give us a brief snippet on the timeline for the transition as, as, as it stands today? And I know that it's still moving, but can you just give us a kind of an overview of that?
So, everything that the region does sunsets on June 30th. And so, we will shut down the region from June until probably about mid-September. We'll close out all those books. We will, that fund in the county will be cleared up. We'll pay back anything, any money that we have left to the state. And at the same time then, the disability access point starts on July 1st and we will need to be responsible for all fourteen counties. And so, we need to make sure we know who those clients are, that services remain in place and that we can make sure that those are moving forward. There are some services considered unique services that do not match up with a Medicaid-funded service. And so, for those services, the state is going to continue some of them through contracts with us. So, you'll see a contract amendment come through the board of supervisors at some point for us to take on the funding of those services for the first six months. And through that time period, then we will evaluate if those services can go statewide with the state. And if they cannot, then those services will need to be discontinued also. So, that's one of the things staff will be working on as they do their assessment and the planning process for us. So, all that will take place from July until December. So, it's really that June 30th, July 1st is the big, flip the switch.
Okay. And on that note, we'll have our last meeting on June 17th?
Yes.
And then, what will happen at that point to the governance structure?
Do you want to talk about that? Because there's a resolution to end and I'll let Andrea, we've been working with her.
Andrea Petrovic, Assistant County Attorney. So, yeah, we have within our, our governing documents, our, our process in which we need to go by to kind of shut down the region. You'll be seeing resolutions and documents to that effect that then you can take a vote on. And then, we'll need to, as Annie stated, do the financials of it and return any funds to the state. So, yeah, we'll be presenting documents on that June 17th date, both here to the region governing board and then following that to the board of supervisors for closing out the governance structure of the region governing board.
And then, reinstituting the new governance structure will look like?
So, for the new disability access point, we will have to have an advisory council that does not have any power, I guess. I'll just say it bluntly.
It's an advisory?
An advisory-only council. So, any resolutions will come to the board of supervisors for the disability access point.
Okay. All right. Thank you Annie. Any other, any other items for the good of the cause before we entertain a motion to adjourn? Yes?
You know, for Polk County, on behalf of Polk County residents and the clients we've served, I just think, just, I would think about what, because it's, you know, Annie and her staff are not gonna be in that role anymore. But, as problems do come up from any of the clients that are going through this transition, what could be a process that we would lead or, you know, respond to that individual? And if they come to one of us providers, we're gonna, we're gonna deal with it. But, they could be in a homeless shelter, they could be staying with a friend or family. And I think as of July 1, Annie's really not gonna be, and our staff are not gonna be in that role. So, I think, you know, we're the largest county in Iowa. We've got the most at risk here and I think Christina's, I trust her judgment. I think she's, she's been to all these meetings and appears to be, you know, perplexed. So, I respect that. So, I just think we should, I don't think we should decide anything today, Matt.
Yeah.
I just think about it between now and the next meeting.
Yeah.
And we do have the responsibility that if somebody walks in our door, we serve them.
Sure.
It's no wrong door. So, if somebody does come, we will get them to the right place and then we will document that they came to us so that the state knows.
And I think Christina's, I trust her judgment. I think she's, she's been to all these meetings and appears to be, you know, perplexed. So I respect that. So I just think we should, I don't think we should decide anything today, Matt.
Yeah.
I just think about it between now and the next meeting.
Yeah.
And we do have the responsibility that if somebody walks in our door, we serve them.
Sure.
It's no wrong door. So if somebody does come, we will get them to the right place and then we will document that they came to us so that the state knows. We have to report that to the state anytime somebody comes that should be going to Iowa Primary Care Association or to a managed care organization. So we'll be documenting all of that and reporting it.
Okay. Well, I think that's an excellent point, Steve. And we should, we should, we should definitely understand the process for that and how to direct those individuals to the help they need. And obviously Annie and her team will still be there directing. But it's making sure that people understand that, that those folks are falling through the cracks. I think that's important, so, so that we understand where the holes in the system are, so. Annie, thank you. At this time, I'd entertain a motion then to adjourn the Polk County Health, Mental Health and Disability Services Board meeting.
Second.
All those in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same time? Okay, thank you. This time I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Holm?
Yes.
Hawkinsmith?
Yes.
Altringer?
Yes.
McCoy?
Yes. Thank you. Good morning. I would, at this time, call the regular meeting of the Polk County Board of Supervisors together and ask for a roll call.
Holm?
Here.
Hawkinsmith?
Here.
Connolly? Altringer?
Here.
McCoy?
Here. Action on the minutes from the previous meeting?
So moved. Second.
Roll call?
Holm?
Yes.
Hawkinsmith?
Yes.
Altringer?
Yes.
McCoy?
Yes. Any special claims?
None.
Action on the bill list is submitted by the county auditor. Roll call?
Holm?
Yes.
Hawkinsmith?
Yes.
Altringer?
Yes.
McCoy?
Yes. At this time, we'll stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Go ahead and move on to public hearings now.
Our first public hearing is on the fiscal year 2024-2025 budget amendment.
Is proof of publication on file?
Yes.
Is there anyone here wishing to speak?
Yes.
On this item related to the 2425 budget amendment? If not, I would go ahead and close the hearing and ask for a motion.
So moved. Second.
Roll call?
For number six, resolution amending fiscal year 2024-2025 budget.
Holm?
Yes.
Hawkinsmith?
Yes.
Altringer?
Yes.
McCoy?
Yes. Public item number two relates to plans and specifications for a contract and estimated cost for Little Four Mile Creek Stream Restoration Project.
Public hearing for Thomas Mitchell Stream Restoration Project. The resolution approving plans, specifications, form of contract and estimated cost.
Is proof of publication on file?
Yes.
Is there anyone wishing to speak on the item related to the Little Four Mile Creek Stream Restoration Project? If not, I would close the hearing and ask for a motion.
Second.
Roll call?
Holm?
Yes.
Hawkinsmith?
Yes.
Connolly?
Yes.
Altringer?
Yes.
McCoy?
Yes. Item number three is another public hearing?
This public hearing is on plans, specifications, form of contract and estimated cost for Thomas Mitchell Stream Restoration Project.
Is proof of publication on file?
Yes.
Is there anyone wishing to speak on this item related to Thomas Mitchell Stream Restoration Project? If not, I would close the hearing and ask for a motion and roll call?
Moved. Second.
Roll call?
Holm?
Yes.
Hawkinsmith?
Yes.
Connolly?
Yes.
Altringer?
Yes.
McCoy?
Yes. Now we're at the point in the meeting where we do accept public comments on any subject related to issues before the board. So at this time, is there anyone wishing to speak for a general public comment section?
Yes.
Please come to the microphone, state your name and address and go ahead and share your thoughts with us.
Sure. I spoke with Matt and Tom and Richard. I don't know whether he's here with, if Polk County Board of Supervisors or Conservation. I am interested and willing to put in a bid to buy Sleepy Hollow.
Okay, tell us your name and your address.
Oh, Gerald Van Lake, 1310 Southwest 5th Street, Ankeny, Iowa.
Okay.
I got three others if you want those two, but there you go. That gets me in Polk County. So just to make it clear and open to the knowledge, I will be willing to work with the Board of Supervisors to purchase Sleepy Hollow.
Okay.
That's all I've got. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your.
So the budget may change. If, you know, you asked about the budget, so your budget may change if we proceed or not proceed with that.
Okay.
All right, very good. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other individual wishing to speak to the board or public comment section? If not, we'll go ahead and move on to permits.
Number 10, fiscal year 2526, applications for cigarette, tobacco, nicotine vapor permits for those listed on the agenda.
Roll call?
Holm?
Yes.
Hawkinsmith?
Yes.
Connolly?
Yes.
Altringer?
Yes.
McCoy?
Yes.
Number 11, renewal application for Class E Retail Alcohol License for Quick Trip #562 at 4801 Northeast 14th Street.
Roll call?
Holm?
Yes.
Hawkinsmith?
Yes.
Connolly?
Yes.
Altringer?
Yes.
McCoy?
Yes. Resolutions.
Number 12, resolution approving the final plat of Yellow Banks. Numbers 13 and 14 are resolutions awarding contracts for Four Mile Creek Tributary Stream Restoration Project and Little Four Mile Creek Stream Restoration Project to RW Excavating Solutions. And number 15, resolution approving professional services agreement with HDR Engineering for Wetland Design.
So moved. Second.
Roll call?
Holm?
Yes.
Hawkinsmith?
Yes.
Connolly?
Yes.
Altringer?
Yes.
McCoy?
Yes.
Numbers 16 and 17 are resolutions approving value-based incentive payments for integrated services agencies and to service providers. Number 18, resolution approving mental health, intellectual disability, developmental disability service approvals and authorizing expenditures from the Mental Health and Disability Services Region Fund. Number 19, resolution approving amendment to agreement with Mosaic. And 20, resolution approving amended agreement for an opioid settlement fund grant with Iowa Harm Reduction Coalition.
So moved. Second.
Roll call?
Holm?
Yes.
Hawkinsmith?
Yes.
Connolly?
Yes.
Altringer?
Yes.
McCoy?
Yes.
Number 21, resolution approving agreement with Iowa Health and Human Services for Iowa Child Abuse Prevention Program Grant.
So moved. Second.
Roll call?
Holm?
Yes.
Hawkinsmith?
Yes.
Connolly?
Yes.
Altringer?
Yes.
McCoy?
Yes.
Number 22, resolution authorizing Auditor's Office to publish notice of public hearing on June 3 for approval of deed of conservation easement to the Great Outdoors Foundation.
Second.
Roll call?
Holm?
Yes.
Hawkinsmith?
Yes.
Connolly? Altringer?
Yes.
McCoy?
Yes.
Numbers 23 and 24 are resolutions approving contracts with Fex Steve Limited to address lead hazard repairs at 4123 9th Street and 2611 40th Street in Des Moines. Number 25, resolution approving contract with Richmond Construction to address lead hazard repairs at 3823 4th Street, Des Moines. 26, resolution approving amendment to of contract with local public health services funding with the Iowa Department of Health and Human Services. And number 27, resolution approving release of mortgage for 621 Oak Park Avenue, Des Moines.
So moved. Second.
Roll call?
Holm?
Yes.
Hawkinsmith?
Yes.
Connolly?
Yes.
Altringer?
Yes.
McCoy?
Yes.
Number 28, resolution approving detention services intergovernmental agreement with the United States Marshal Service. And 29, resolution approving the service and pricing agreement with medical priority consultants for licensed products and services.
So moved. Second.
I'm wondering on item 28, if we could just briefly touch on what we're doing there? Which is the amended agreement with the intergovernmental agreement with the Marshal's Office.
Okay, absolutely. So Polk County Sheriff's Office has an agreement with the Department of Justice to house federal inmates, has since the inception of the jail in 2008. We charge a per diem that the federal government reimburses. That rate was $105 a day. And through negotiation and a lot of great work by the Sheriff's Office and his team, they were able to negotiate an increase to $160. So that will result in, on our current numbers, $4 million annually to the County General Fund. So it's a testament to the job the Sheriff's Office does, that facility, the way it operates and the agreement we have with the US Marshal Service and ICE. And so business with the jail, but an additional $4 million in revenue to Polk County.
Well, that's certainly, thank you. Roll call?
Holm?
Yes.
Hawkinsmith?
Yes.
Connolly?
Yes.
Altringer?
Yes.
McCoy?
Yes.
Numbers 30 and 31 are resolutions approving modifications within the Department of General Services and the Sheriff's Office. And number 32, resolution approving contract agreement with Employee and Family Resources.
So moved. Second.
Roll call?
Holm?
Yes.
Hawkinsmith?
Yes.
Connolly?
Yes.
Altringer?
Yes.
McCoy?
Yes.
No, we did 28.
Number 33, resolution approving the form and authorizing execution of a note purchase agreement to underwrite $169,650,000, subject to change, general obligation capital loan notes, Series 2025A, exempt facility bonds, AMT, and $68,180,000, subject to change, general obligation capital loan notes, Series 2025B, non-AMT.
So moved. Second.
Hey, at this time, this would be for the attachment, Attachment A, which is the Piper Sandler attachment. And I believe we have Tim Oswald who's going to explain to us what we're doing today.
Sure, thank you. So, Tim Oswald, Piper Sandler. So the bonds are scheduled to be sold tomorrow morning. And the, there's two, as noted, there's two series of bonds. One series of bonds that's for the investor will be subject to the alternative minimum tax and the other series will be considered governmental. So that's why you have two different sets of numbers there. And on the Attachment A, I shared the estimated interest rates. And this was prepared as of yesterday morning. The estimated interest rates produced for the AMT series of bonds, an interest rate of 4.76%. And for the governmental, an interest rate of 4.53%. Tells you a little bit about the difference in the tax impact on certain investors. Doing okay so far?
Yeah. So these are, Tim, these are the rates that, that obviously the airport is going to be borrowing at. If they were in the commercial market today borrowing this amount of money, what types of rates would they be encountering?
Just the airport themselves?
Yeah.
At least 1% higher.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, so again, through referendum, the voters have authorized this bonding capacity and as a result, saved at least 1% of interest on the overall note on these bonds.
Yeah, and I recall an exercise a year and a half or so ago where we calculated how much that would mean per ticket to a consumer of the flyer in and out of the airport. And I have in my head, so please don't hold me to it, but I have in my head it was something like $7 per in and out per ticket. So that's the difference in the costs you were just referencing.
Awesome. That's great.
So in terms of the resolution, the ask for your consideration is that you authorize a rate on the AMT bond of 4.92%. And for the governmental Series B, 4.69%. So that is the current market rate plus a quarter of a percent. I realize that seems like, that, to me, that's a lot of wiggle room. In case you're curious, rates moved 8/1,000ths of a percent yesterday. So, but it gives us a little wiggle room should rates move today and overnight before we get into the market tomorrow.
Very good. Any questions for Tim?
This is great. Thank you.
That's great. Roll call?
Holm?
Yes.
Hawkinsmith?
Yes.
Connolly?
Yes.
Altringer?
Yes.
McCoy?
Yes.
I do need two signatures as we're going to price tomorrow. I do need your signature, which will be held in escrow. Can I get that now?
You bet.
Or should I get it later? Okay.
Yes. Okay, thank you. Okay. Thank you.
Number 34, resolution approving OVG's fiscal year 2526 capital budget request for certain improvements at the Iowa Event Center. And number 35, resolution approving motion motel tax collections to the World Food Prize Foundation.
Second.
Roll call?
Holm?
Yes.
Hawkinsmith?
Yes.
Connolly?
Yes.
Altringer?
Yes.
McCoy?
Yes.
Number 36, resolution approving community development grant for the Community Foundation of Greater Des Moines, fiscal agent for West Des Moines Community Foundation. And numbers 37 and 38 are resolutions approving community betterment grant awards and community sponsorship awards.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call?
Holm?
Yes.
Hawkinsmith?
Yes.
Connolly?
Yes.
Altringer?
Yes.
McCoy?
Yes.
Communications. Number 39, notice of time and place of consultation on the proposed voluntary annexation to the City of Urbandale of certain real estate generally located within the corporate boundaries of the City of Grimes.
Refer to Public Works and County Attorney? Any budget actions?
None.
Memorandum of appointments?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call?
Holm?
Yes.
Hawkinsmith?
Yes.
Connolly?
Yes.
Altringer?
Yes.
McCoy?
Yes.
Any board comments today? Hearing done. I entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call?
Holm?
Yes.
Hawkinsmith?
Yes.
Connolly?
Yes.
Altringer?
Yes.
McCoy?
Yes.
Thank you all very much.